The following meeting is being conducted by electronic means in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975 amended for 2020, which explicitly permits a public body to conduct meetings electronically during a state of emergency. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coaster and the Asbury Park Press. All notices are on file with the Board Secretary. In addition, a notice regarding this virtual meeting and instructions were published in the Asbury Park Press and the City of Asbury Park website. A copy of that notice is on file with the Board Secretary as well. The notices and the conduct of this meeting are in accordance with the guidelines for virtual meetings issued by the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs. Please note, all microphones of public users are muted until the public question and comment sections. When the public question or comment session is open, you must raise your hand by clicking on the raise hand button on a computer or dialing asterix nine on a telephone. When it is your turn to speak, your name or last four digits of your phone number will be called. Your microphone will then be unmuted. If at any time during your question, you are deemed to be out of line or topic, we reserve the right to mute your microphone and we'll make an announcement that this has occurred. Please turn off all cell phones and electronic devices during the meeting. If you have any background noise at any time during the meeting, please mute yourself. Please identify yourself before you speak at all times, as some attendees are attending by telephone only. This meeting is being recorded and will be available to view via AP TV.
Thank you, Chris. I will take Rome now. Christopher Avaloni. Russell Lewis. Russell Lewis?
Russell's muted.
I'm here.
Thank you. Daniel Harris?
Yeah.
Brittany Ashman? Christopher Gonzalez?
Here.
Jill Potter?
Here.
Tim Slick?
Here.
Catherine Minervini?
Here.
Bonnie Knack?
Here.
Thank you, everyone.
All right. First up, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of June 9, 2020.
I'll second.
Thank you. And just to note, Exhibit B1 is the meetings on the screen now. I have a motion by Christopher Avaloni, a second by Russell Lewis. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you.
All right. One of the topics we have for the agenda is an amendment to our zoning board bylaws. Has everyone on the board had a chance to see the amendment that we're adding to the bylaws?
Yes.
Yes.
Does anyone have any changes, or is everyone in agreement with the verbiage?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, I read it. I'm fine with it.
Yeah, it's fine. I've read it.
I'm good.
Yes.
Sounds like we have an agreement there, Irene. Do we need to take a vote?
Yes, we need a motion and a vote to amend the bylaws to include the recent addition that you just discussed.
So I'll make that a motion to amend the bylaws with the recent addition.
I'll second.
Thank you. I have a motion by Christopher Avaloni, a second by Russell Lewis. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. Amendment to the bylaws.
Okay.
All right. So we have a couple of applications that we need to carry. The first one is for 1302, but I'm recused, so I need a motion for that application to be carried.
I'll make a motion. This is Russell Lewis, acting as chair. I'll make a motion to carry 1302 Madison Avenue to August 11, 2020 without further notice.
I'll second that.
Thank you. I have a motion by Russell Lewis and a second by Brittany Ashman to carry the application to August 11, 2020 without further notice. Everyone in favor, except for Christopher Avaloni, please say aye.
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 Thank you. Any opposed? Application carried. Thank you.
And I will make a motion to carry the 117 Borden Avenue BBC Capella Group to July 14, 2020 without further notice.
I'll second.
Thank you. I have a motion by Christopher Avaloni and a second by Russell Lewis. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. Application carried to July 14, 2020 without further notice.
All right. So we have one application to hear tonight, which is 1207 Berg Street. Mr. Karas, Mr. Vandermark, it's your show. Please start. Mr. Surfaco, do we have all the notices?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the members of the board have reviewed the notices in detail. They're in good order. We have jurisdiction to proceed with the application this evening.
I appreciate that. Mr. Karas, you're up.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. We are here tonight on behalf of an application on behalf of 1207 Berg Street LLC. My name is Andrew Karas with the firm Fox Rothschild, representing the applicant 1207 Berg Street LLC. The property for which we're here tonight is located, as clearly indicated from the name, 1207 Berg Street. It's block 3505 lot 7. Just to give a little background on the property and what we are looking for tonight, there's an existing two-family dwelling on the property. In terms of the history, there had been illegal residents in the garage when my client purchased the property, but that has since been removed since it was an illegal residence. So what had been illegal free family is now a legal, legal two-family residence. The structure for which we're dealing with is in a deteriorated condition. It is a decheval deteriorated structure. You have lot size 2,500 square feet for the property. We're located within R1 zone. It is in the infill area in the waterfront redevelopment. What is being proposed is to essentially renovate the former structure and bring it back to its former glory. We're going to go through that in a little bit. One thing I do want to mention to the board, if you have driven by the property, you will notice that there has been some work that has been done on the property. That work, though, is pursuant to a zoning permit that was issued and construction permit so as to prevent any further deterioration of the site. That was all approved work that had been done on the property. As I indicated, my client is looking to renovate the property and bring it back to its former glory. What you'll see from the plans, that it's going to be a rather beautiful residence.
Just a quick question, Mr. Karas. How long has Mr. Vandermark owned this property?
I'm not... If we can swear him in, maybe he can answer that. Probably about a year, if not much.
Since August of 2019.
Please raise your right hand, Mr. Vandermark. You saw me swear a testimony about giving this man the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Okay, please state and spell your name and give us your affiliation with the applicant.
Sure. That is Anthony C. Vandermark Jr. Vandermark is V-A-N-D-E-R-M-A-R-K. This evening, I'm wearing actually two hats. I'm in a unique position that I am the Architect of Record and one of the owners of the property, along with my wife's sister and brother-in-law. So this is a family affair this evening.
Thank you.
Mr. Avaloni?
Just another question in regards to the property. Is this property, just two-family, is Mr. Vandermark going to be living in this property? Or is it... So will we owner-occupied?
Yeah, it's a very good question. We are not real estate developers, and this is not an investment property where we're going to be renting it. This is going to be an owner-occupied property by this family.
Ah, that's always nice to hear.
If I may, the reason that we're here is that the work that is being done had been deemed originally by the construction official to be an expansion of a non-conforming use. Since it is a two-family residential dwelling, residential structure, you know, R1 zone, only one family structures are permitted. There was a determination that it was an expansion, basically because of a dormer that is being put on. What I'm going to be doing tonight in my application is requesting two things. Number one, I'm going to answer a determination by the board as to an interpretation as to whether or not, under the state statute NJ SA 4555 D-70B, it is an expansion of a non-conforming use, or whether or not it is an essential, essentially it is negligible or insubstantial, so is not qualified as an expansion of a non-conforming use. In the application I had submitted, I cited a number of cases that pertain to that, particularly the Leehan case, Leehan versus the Atlantic Highlands Zoning Board of Adjustment, 252 New Jersey, Super 392, Tal Division 1991. And in that particular case, there are renovations that were being done to a multifamily, multifamily dwelling. The determination was that since it was not an intensification of the site, it did not qualify as an expansion of a non-conforming use. They were doing a significant amount of interior renovations to the property. However, one thing that is notable in that is that what they had done with the renovations in the Leehan case, separate and apart from the interior renovations, they had added a significant amount of cubic square footage to the third floor, which the court had deemed to markedly change the appearance and size of that floor in the house. In terms, what the court concluded was, the other interior renovations were not an expansion, but because that part of the construction was deemed to be an expansion of a non-conforming use. In our particular case, we'll provide testimony that the dormer is not a markedly change of appearance or of size of the floor or the house. In turn, our position is that it is not an expansion of a non-conforming use. In fact, the total square footage of the house is being decreased. If the board decides that it is an expansion of a non-conforming use, we're still seeking in this application a variance under D2 for an expansion of a non-conforming use, and what we call our planner, Mr. Cole, is to testify as that. With that being said, what I'll do is I'll get directly to the testimony. There's variance relief that is being requested, but it's all existing non-conform use that we have, or a decrease actually in the non-conform use that appear at the site. Just to go through those briefly, we have lot area of 2,500. It's not changing. The required is 5,000. Side yard setback of 1.6 feet and 4 feet on the other side. Required 6 feet on each side, 14 combined, not changing. Front yard setback, 25 is required, so 11.7, that is not changing. Same with the rear yard setback. You're right up against the property line at 0.3 feet. Required is 25, but it's not changing at all. Lot depth is not changing. It's at 50 feet. The density is not changing. It's 2.0 is existing under the building units. It's at 1, and that 1 is required as a max. That's not changing. The FAR 0.5 is allowed. We have existing 1.05 that's actually being reduced to 1.04. Similarly, with building coverage, 25 max is allowed. Without the deck, it's at 54%. We're lowering that to 53%. Including the deck goes from 67 to 66. The height is the same. We're actually adding a parking space in the site. In turn, with the testimony that'll be presented, as the board will see, we're decreasing the intensity of the site. We're not increasing anything to require variance relief, or additional variance relief. With that being said, what I'm going to do is call my client, Anthony Vandermark, who happens to be also one of the members of the entity that owns the property. He's also a licensed architect. I believe he's been sworn, so I think we can get his qualifications.
That'd be fine, Mr. Karas.
Thank you. Anthony?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for being here. I am a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey. My license is in good standing. License number 17698. I am also licensed in the states of New York, Pennsylvania, and the US Virgin Islands. I graduated the New Jersey Interior Technology in 1995. I have testified in front of dozens of zoning and planning boards across the state of New Jersey, to name a few. Jersey City, Hoboken, the city of Bayonne.
Thank you, Mr. Vandermark. That's fine.
Thank you very much.
We accept your credentials.
Much appreciated.
Mr. Vandermark, you're obviously familiar with this property. Am I correct?
I believe I'm too familiar with this property. Correct?
All right. And you prepared plans relative to the work that has been proposed at this property, correct?
That's correct.
And I believe we've identified that previously as A1, the last revision date of March 3, 2020. If we can do share screen and bring those up.
I am not permitted yet.
Irene? Irene is on mute.
Got it. Go ahead, Mr. Vandermark.
Excellent. Okay, just to recap, that the existing property of 1207 Berg Street is in the renovation infill area of waterfront redevelopment plan. Subject property is outlined in red here. You are on the western side of Berg Street.
So we're clear, that had previously been marked as A2 for identification, that aerial photograph? Okay, go ahead.
We are approximately mid-block, in between Fourth Avenue, which is to the south, and Fifth Avenue to the right, which is out north, a half a block to Sunset Lake. We have 50 feet of frontage, as Mr. Karas had explained, about 50 feet in depth. This particular immediate neighborhood is a real mixed bag. And you know, we think, at one time, this house stood alone. It was very prominent before all the subdivisions actually packed in these structures into the neighborhood here. Immediately to our south on our side of the block is the Shoreview condominium apartment building. That is three stories tall, and it's separated from our property, as you can see, by a curb cut and also a parking lot. Immediately to our north is a two-story, single-family house, which is literally 6 feet away from our building line. On our corner to the north is, again, a single-family, two-story house. Directly to our rear, approximately 4 inches. We are 4 inches from the property line is a three-story Capri Terrace condominium. In the foreground, across the street on the southeast corner, is a three-family, multifamily. Directly across the street is a two-story, single-family. And you have the large parking lot of the Asbury Lane. You have the large parking lot of the Asbury Lane, and in the foreground is the Asbury Hotel. This was a very prominent structure at one time.
If we were to look at A1 for identification, this is on page EXC. There are a number of photographs that are attached to site plan, and these are the color photographs of what we see on the site plan as A1. Go ahead, Anthony.
That's correct. Thank you. The house was constructed, at least from what I can see online, from, it was either 1910 or 1921, or somewhere in that time period. However, if you go to the waterfront redevelopment plan 1885 map, it appears that there is a building on this property very similar to the shape of 1207, as you see before you. So this structure, the original structure, you know, made date back predate 1885. As you can see, this is prior to some of the structural repairs and the renovation that we're doing right now. This two-family structure, which is the principal house, has fallen into complete disrepair. The previous owners have neglected this structure over the course of many years. They did the absolute minimum to this house to maintain occupancy in the house. However, it was in structural failure in certain areas. I have some pre-existing photographs of the roof and some of the conditions inside the house that I want to discuss. You're in the foreground.
Mr. Vandermark, if I could interrupt you for one second, what is that structure to the left of the house? Is that, was that a garage?
Yeah, yeah. I was going to get into that. This is the illegal third unit, which they somehow converted a garage/ carriage house into a third unit. And here, in between the two structures, they infill in between the two structures with a galley kitchen. So as part of the...
It looks tiny.
It was, it's 8 feet high by 8 feet wide, and the galley kitchen had a footprint of 41 square feet. And the galley kitchen was approximately 4 feet wide by, you know, 20 feet in length. You know, even if the carriage house or this unit number three was deemed legal, we had no intention of actually renting this out. It's absolutely ridiculous. So when we did acquire the property, we agreed that we would eliminate this third unit. Also, as you can see, that the house style, I think originally, might have been some form of transitional arts and crafts. However, a lot of the details are now missing. As you can see in these long roof eaves here, and also the bracketing around the roof line, that this may have been arts and crafts. I don't think this is the original porch, you know, to the original structure here. Because they did infill the railing system and everything else. They have asbestos siding, and interior was filled with lead-based paint, mold, and all sorts of water damage. Subject property has a main gable that runs from the east to the west. It has a cantilevered gable on the southern side. And what we're looking to do this evening is, there's a pre-existing shed dormer that's on the northern side of the roof line. We're looking to convert that shed dormer into a dormer, and thus is the reason why we're here tonight, as an expansion of a non-conforming structure. Here, as you can see, that they have, over time, cut many holes in this roof. And we can now see that the structural deflection here on the porch. This is the intent of the final...
Wow.
This is the...
Don't show your cards. Don't show your cards, Christopher.
I'm sorry. I couldn't help myself.
So what you're looking at is a three-dimensional photorealistic rendering, you know, plopped into a photograph.
So we're clear, these photos have been identified as A3. Go ahead.
Here to the northern side is the new dormer addition. We are adding a 5x12 footprint, approximately 60 square feet, to the edge in line with the face of the northern side of the house. We are not breaking the eve line, and that equates to 6 habitable square feet by ordinance. That's how much habitable square footage we're actually adding to the property. We are proposing a black standing seam roof with aluminum clad, true divided line. We are proposing a second floor walkout above the original porch footprint with an open trellis, non-closed, with a profiled trellis edge. We are now removing that closed railing. We're repairing all the foundations in the porch, and we are creating an open balustrade. All of the retaining walls on the property are being restored, as well as the house foundation. The original house, approximately 130, the original house had to be underpinned. All of that work has since been done. Majority of the floor joists had to be replaced. So we have come a long way already as part of this renovation. We were very fortunate. Subject property, as you, to the left, you have the existing survey.
Anthony, I just want to identify this. We're back to A1. New plans? Go ahead.
We have the original survey for the property. 1.7 feet to the left side, which is the southern side. At 3.10 to the northern side here at the side yard. We are 4 inches off of the rear property line and 11 foot 7 inches to the front property line. So the front property line is not...
Just to interrupt you one second, you're not changing the footprint of this house at all, though, correct? You're not decreasing it?
No, we're not. All we're doing is actually eliminating... You see, this was the actual galley kitchen here. And we're also going to eliminate this portion of this exterior deck.
So in essence, you're decreasing the footprint, correct?
Yeah, we're decreasing the lot coverage by 80 square feet here. And I will show an amendment to the plans to actually show that we are reducing this area of the deck by 39 square feet, and already we've removed that galley kitchen of the third unit. So although it was illegal, we're physically removing the third unit, thus lessing the intensity of property. The original structure, when acquired, was a top-bottom. I was able to actually switch that to a two-family side-by-side. We are family. No one wanted to be on the bottom, especially me. So both families are now side-by-side. We both have two floors with the northern unit actually getting the third floor attic space. That is my brother-in-sister-in-law, because they do have three kids. As part of this proposal, again...
Are you converting the garage? Will you be converting the garage back to a garage?
The garage... I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Mr. Harris. I muted your microphone because we're getting some background noise. You can unmute your microphone at any time during the meeting when you want to speak. Thank you. Sorry about that.
It's okay. We are converting the third unit back into a garage. Technically, the dimensions of the garage don't qualify for it to be a parking space. However, it is big enough for you to get a compact or some compact car in that garage.
What are the dimensions of that garage?
The dimensions of that garage are, the outer dimension is at 9 feet. The interior dimension is at 8 feet, and you're at approximately 18 feet in depth here.
So it's sufficient for a compact car, correct?
Yeah, it's sufficient for a compact car, you know, at 5, 6, you know, 14 feet. The original carriage house unit had a full bathroom. We are going to eliminate the shower in that bathroom and just have a half-bath back in the garage. The existing property has a rear deck. As you can see, it hovers approximately 3 feet above the Capri Terrace, both driveway aisle and also, you know, parking lot. This balcony is not private. These are cantilevered balconies to keep Capri Terrace actually look over onto this proposed deck. So what we're looking to do is, we're looking to eliminate 39 square feet of that deck area. We are looking to provide a privacy screen here. And then also, we want to have a covered porch with a closed railing here. So, you know, cars, as they're traveling in the evening, we don't want the headlights actually shining on that deck. So we are going to, we're going to add this closed railing system. And for privacy sake and also security, we're looking to have a roof over, you know, this open deck area. So that's an amendment that we're making to the plans. This does not change the habitable square footage, and it does not change. And actually, we're still reducing the overall lot coverage by 80 square feet. Second floor, again, the two units are side-by-side. We have two bedrooms apiece, both the north and the south unit. We are proposing a walkout, second floor roof deck, which is above the original footprint of the porch. We did not propose swing doors onto this porch. Part of the redevelopment plan talks about that all doors have to be swing doors. We didn't want either the approach with the swing to be either onto the deck or either of these bedroom spaces. Therefore, we were requesting a design waiver for sliding door there. We also think the sliding door is more appropriate for waterproofing of the facade at the second floor. Third floor, and by ordinance, it is a third floor. The shaded area here on the third floor is a 5x12 area that's going to be part of the new dormer. The new dormer will be in line with the edge of the house at the northern face. As you can see below here is the footprint of the new dormer, and the roof eave will continue as originally intended as part of the architecture.
By adding that roof, that adds to the symmetry of the building, am I correct?
It absolutely adds to the architecture of the building. Right now, you have a main gable with one gable from the south attached to the ridge line. This will now provide a kind of a four-gabled approach, which is a term in architecture, and it'll add balance to the facade. Here in lower left-hand corner, you're looking at the habitable area of the third floor. So if you see this, the new gable here at the northern side of the... So if you see this, the new gable here at the northern side of the property line, it adds balance to the house in both directions. So now, you know, you have a main gable, and then you have a southern and a northern gable. This is a front facade. The entry stairs are being moved from the south part of the property to the central location, thus approaching the two units from the center. The balustrade will be opened up. We're providing all-new landscaping and, again, restoration of all the foundation walls and retaining walls on the property. Over here to the left, as you can see, unit number three will be converted back into a garage slash carriage house. There will be a painted aluminum door on that structure. Again, two-dimensional elevations. Here is the new dormer on the northern elevation. This is the open balustrade on the second floor with a profiled trellis rafter as a cap. That will be open air, though. We just wanted to provide a little bit of sun protection, you know, early time of the day. This property is limited. As you can see, we have no rear yard. We have no side yards, a very limited front yard. We really needed a private kind of secure space, you know, A for the kids and also, you know, our dogs. So we needed someplace to congregate. So we think the second floor is going to be that place. This is the elevation of the north. We removed the single-family adjacent property, so you can see the elevation to the north, the open balustrade, as I just discussed, and also the new proposed dormer. Side elevations, again, we are going to cut this deck and, again, improve this foundation, which is already completed, and protect this for privacy and security with a roof line. Existing house now is structurally safe. Again, we have underpinned 1/3 of the house and replaced the majority of the floor joists. And also, if you take a quick look at this, is that we replaced the northern half. This is a photograph taken by myself during the, some of the restoration. All of these roof rafters are, as you can see, splitting in failure. So we had to physically reconstruct the northern side of the roof and all of the eve roof rates here. This was the original roof tear-off. Again, we had to replace the majority of this northern side of the roof. You can see here the original shed dormer that we're looking to replace and balance this roof, which is to the north. Just to talk about neglect of this property, most houses have a layer, maybe two layers of shingles. This house had six layers of asphalt shingles on it. The weight of the shingle itself caused roof failure, and again, there was water penetration all over the roof. It was very bad condition. Just one thing to note when we go back to this photograph is that this house at one time had a second-floor open porch. As you can see, these roof rafters are painted. This is the clapboard from the original house. So we think that this house, at one time, at the very least, had a very big footprint porch on the first floor and a second-floor outdoor porch that overlooked the north. You would never intend to do that right now because you are six feet away from the adjacent property here in the north.
Where will you put your HVAC equipment, Mr. Vandermark?
Very good question. If you don't mind me just skipping back. The HVAC equipment is located, there is a flat section of roof above the second floor. It is going to go, it is on the southern and western side of the house. They're going to go here, and one of the comments in the report was that it would be very nice if these were screened. By all means, we're going to provide an AZAC screen around these units, so you're not going to be able to see them from the condominium project in the west. Southern side of the house, and one of the reasons why we're here this evening is we're looking to seek approval to complete, you know, the renovation that we originally started here. And, you know, I asked the board to just assist us to continue to keep moving forward with this. Thank you.
You had a chance to review with me the planner's report, am I correct?
Yes, I have.
And I believe that's been identified as B2 for identification?
Yes, B2.
Okay. I just want to go through some of those comments briefly with you, okay?
Before you go on with that, Mr. Harris. I just wanted to ask, the roofing material is a metal roof? Is that correct, Mr. Vandermark?
Yes, it is a black standing seam aluminum roof.
So that's an unusual roof for the neighborhood. I, you know, as part of the district, it's probably the only one in that neighborhood which would have a black metal roof. I don't know, you know, how that fits in with the rest of the neighborhood, but I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I asked, is that an issue, Donna, that we would be, have to address?
We'd be requesting exception on that.
Let's get Donna onto oath. Donna, please raise your right hand.
Raising.
The asylum's for testimony about giving this matter the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please identify yourself and your affiliation with the board.
Donna Miller, board planner. So, Mr. Chair, I do identify in the report that the waterfront redevelopment plan, design guidelines, talk about different, certain color palette that's preferred. The black and white is not really the combination that's preferred. So they would need a design exception unless there's another color that they can, they can provide. I just want to clarify, Mr. Vandermark, so you've already installed these windows, the black metal frame windows?
That's correct.
So we're kind of a little cart and horse.
If I can just respond, in the architectural design guidelines of the redevelopment plan, you know, you talk about the predominant, you know, Mediterranean revival, arts and crafts. However, in the redevelopment plan specifically states, "Guidelines encourage the expression of these styles in a modern and contemporary way appropriate to new oceanfront architecture." So, well, yes, it's not part of the traditional palette. I feel that the, you know, the white cement board siding, as well as the board and batten with the black roof, is just more of a slightly modern expression that would be, you know, on a restored arts and crafts transitional house.
Would you agree that interpretation of the waterfront redevelopment plan is basically subjective based upon how you view it architecturally, correct?
Correct.
Well, the board has to agree with that presumption.
Also, in the architectural guidelines, you do have, they have noted galvanized metal roof, which is like, it's almost a zinc color.
Right.
So, you know, we're not too far off from, you know, a silver charcoal gray color to a black, as far as roofing material, but in color, but the material itself is virtually the same.
I think that's something for the board to have to consider.
Chris, are there different guidelines for this district as opposed to the rest of the neighborhoods in town?
I think Donna is a better person to answer that question, but.
Well, so this is in the waterfront redevelopment renovation infill. The plan does not specifically, you know, dissect those two areas. It just gives us architectural guidelines.
Right.
For the entire redevelopment area.
For the, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
I have a quick question about the metal roof. You don't see them very often, and I know them to be loud. Is there a reason why? I know they also have a longer life than an asphalt. I'm assuming, is that, is that why you went with the metal roof, or is it more the contemporary look of it?
It's a twofold thing, yes. You know, you do get a very long life out of a standing seam roof, but also it's the expression, you know, of the architecture as well, and the color palette. You know, myself and my architectural firm are known for some of our very expressive, modern projects. And, you know, this arts and crafts house, and this is part of the identity, you know, that I wanted for the house and also is a reflection of me.
Okay, can you elaborate a little bit on the noise or lack of noise?
Well.
I know if I could brainstorm, they could get pretty loud.
Right. I mean, you know, yes, it'll be slightly louder, you know, than an asphalt shingle roof. But I don't think, especially, you know, at this pitch, you're going to get a heavy thumping of the roof. Any of the flat areas or roof on this property will have, you know, a standard, either rubber roof or a torch-down roof that will have minimal noise impact. So again, you know, I think at this pitch, I think a standing seam roof is not going to, it's not going to give off, you know, a tremendous amount of noise. If these roof pitches were slightly shallower, potentially, yes.
I have a comment on the roof, Bonnie, just to help anyone else that doesn't have. I actually have a pretty big shed in our backyard with a metal roof. It's got a very, very steep pitch, and it's not loud at all.
Okay, so it's all on.
I've been in there, and also I've been outside, and it's not like I could even hear it.
Okay.
Yeah, so if that helps.
I'm going to also have to chime in here because obviously I have my black casement windows right behind me and my black metal wall right behind me, and I have a black standing metal roof around my wraparound porch of my house. And I'll admit that one of the reasons why I put that roof in is so I could hear the rain fall on it. It's actually beautiful to lay in any one of my bedrooms on the second floor and hear the rain fall on that metal roof. My neighbors can't hear it at all. Personally, I think this design's beautiful. I don't have a problem with the black casement windows. Standing seam metal roofs were used in, you know, farmhouses and barns and so many beautiful architecture from this era. I don't find it loud on that level. I just have to chime in and think, and say, I think it's really beautiful.
Mr. Lewis, are those the black casement windows right behind you?
Those are black casement windows right behind me, yes.
If I may interject, my wife is from Florida, so we go down there a few times every year. And actually, I was over her cousins, and it was raining very hard, and I didn't even know there was a metal roof until they told me. And it wasn't that I asked, but it's just a conversation came up about hurricanes, and they were like glad that they had metal roofs. And I was like, you got a metal roof? So there wasn't like a lot of ping, 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 but I agree with Russell, it is a nice sound. Thank you.
Any other comments on the roof?
Yes. This is a two-family house, right?
Correct.
Correct.
Who's going to have the access to the third floor?
The northern unit, unit number two. We have the, my brother and sister-in-law have three kids, so therefore they get access to the three floors, and my wife and I, without kids, will have access to the southern portion, which is two floors.
And you are basically maintaining the color of the previous house, right? The previous house was also white?
The previous asbestos shingle was a white, off-white color, correct?
Okay, no more questions. Thank you.
Anyone else on the roof?
Anthony, what I'd like to do is take you through the report then, and let's go to page three of the report, off-street parking. You indicated that the garage is being converted back, or the, what had been an illegal unit is being converted back to what appears to have been a garage, am I correct?
That's correct.
So that adds an additional parking space to the property whereby currently existing, you have one, so that will add a second parking space to the property, correct?
Correct.
Continuing on, facade color on page four, I believe we've.
Hang on, hang on. Sorry, Andy, it's Donna. So I just want to go back and clarify that about the parking stall in the garage. So I know Mr. Vandermark had given us some dimensions on the interior of that space. So there's also a full bathroom, so shower stall, sink, and commode in that space as well.
And I just testified that that was going to be converted into just a powder room. The shower is going to be eliminated, and it would just be a sink and a toilet at the back end of the garage.
But the, is the volume changing?
No, the volume is not changing. We are not expanding the footprint of that garage, and the volume of the bathroom itself is not changing as well.
Okay, so the space between the doors for the bathroom and the man door on the side to get out of the, of the space, can you tell me what that dimension is?
Sure. So dimension from the bathroom wall to the garage door itself?
No, the man door.
The man door here.
Where it swings in, yeah.
Okay. That dimension would be, and again, I apologize, it's not mentioned on the plans, that looks to be approximately 17 feet.
Okay, but, so if the bathroom door is open and the man door is open, I'm thinking it's more like 14 feet?
Sure, correct.
So I just want to bring that to the board's attention, that, you know, in order for it to be, you know, usable as a parking space, it's really not meeting the minimum criteria. I mean, it's a pretty small car.
What is the requirement, Donna? For, is it for a garage or is it a standard space?
To be counted as parking space, it has to be, you know, minimum eight and a half by 18.
We're half a foot off.
Yeah, and I can also testify, too, is that.
At least.
I could create a pocket door on the bathroom itself, therefore eliminating the inswing into the garage space.
That could help.
Yes.
I don't know, can the man door be an outswing door?
Keep in mind, you don't, you don't need that side door for, a lot of garages, old garages, have access from the side. You can access the garage through the garage door itself while that door is closed.
So it's just for the board to consider as to its utility as, you know, a real parking space?
Right now, all you have is one, so it adds an additional space. Granted, it's a little bit smaller, but it adds an additional space where there is none on the property.
Agreed. And again, you know, I appreciate that this is for the Vandermark's family, immediate family, their extended family. You know, again, it doesn't matter, there may be people after the Vandermarks who will use this property. You know, it has to be able to be utilized by anybody. So credit for a legitimate parking space has to be, you know, meeting the criteria for a legitimate parking space. If the board finds that, you know, because of how the property is being used, its unique, you know, configuration, the size of the lot, the size of the structure, all of those things count as credit toward the grant of, in this case, would be a design exception. It's not a variance, it's a lower, you know, it's much lower bar. And, you know, the board just has to make that finding. I'm just, you know, it doesn't meet the criteria.
Okay.
Right. Were there any plans to remove that bathroom?
No.
How many bathrooms are there in each unit?
The northern side has two and a half, and the southern side has one and a half. You know, the fact, the fact that we have children in the family, really the intent was that, you know, coming back from the beach, that, you know, they, you know, could use that toilet as opposed to running through the house. So we just found it to be more convenient so that the mess would. So we, we just found it to be more convenient so that the mess would stay there as opposed to inside.
I understand that, but as you know, parking is very limited in that area, being so close to the beach and the hotel right there. I strongly think that needs to be a legitimate parking spot, since you already have so many other bathrooms.
It's not the depth. I mean, the depth at 18 feet is legitimate parking space, it's the width.
It's the width.
Nothing that can be done to create a wider garage. If we, and in terms of access to the bathroom, if you create a pocket door, then you're not going to have that swing to the bathroom. And you can always gain access to the garage, to the garage door as opposed to the man door on the side.
I thought it was eight and a half by 18, Donna. Did I hear you wrong?
Sorry, uh.
You know, I.
I heard it was 14 feet wa, long and 18 is required.
So if, if they don't, if it doesn't matter that the man door be functional while there's a car inside, that's what the board has to find.
I can also swing that door out. Um, I could swing that door out.
Swing. Um, so the thing is, the interior dimension is only eight foot clear? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, you know, it's for a parking space in a parking lot, that's allowed as long as you have enough, you know, backup length to make the maneuvering. So in this case, it's more of a, well, can I really get the door open? Problem. So, um.
We could adjust that by changing that man door to make it swing out and doing a pocket door in the bathroom.
Right, so the board can say, you know, eight feet is a little tight for the interior width. But, um, there's, it's not enough of a benefit to make that space wider. I mean, if you had to enlarge that garage space, you would take away the, you know, that open space you're creating between the garage and the house that used to be a kitchen. You know, and it would probably conflict with, you know, the nice, uh, overhang you're getting with the, with the second floor. And, you know, that space would now be diminished. For the sake of, oh, I want, you know, an extra eight to six inches of width in that parking space. So these are all things the board can say, yes, that's acceptable, we grant the, you know, the exception.
So how wide is that? You said, I heard 14 feet from door to door?
If you have a swing door on the bathroom and you have an inswing door for that man door on the side of the garage, there's only about 14 feet clear. The architect has said he can make the man door an outswing door and he can make the bathroom door a pocket door. That would have removed the conflicts with the interior dimensions and then you would have a long enough space.
Okay, thank you.
Which will stipulate to?
I already have it written down in the.
Thank you, Jack.
Uh, it's Donna again. I mean, they still, as a two-family house, they need three off-street parking spaces. They're still going to have that deficiency. You know, maybe it's in the real world application, you know, it's a technicality. Real world, if they have small enough cars, they may be able to get three cars off the street.
Technically, you've got a non-conforming use with two families with a parking deficiency, correct?
Existing.
So. Okay, let's keep going.
Okay, thank you.
Please proceed.
Thank you. Going to page four, for a facade color, we've dealt with the windows, I believe we've already dealt with. Page five, the sliding doors, we've already dealt with the fence. Anthony, can you go through what is being proposed with regards to the fence on the side of the property?
Uh, sure. Um. The existing property already has a six-foot-high, um, opaque PVC fence both to the southern side and here at the northern gate line. Um, we were just simply proposing to add to it here at the northern line and leave it alone. Um, as part of the planning report, um, a wood stockade, a board-on-board fence would be more appropriate. If the board sees fit and that's something, um, you know, that, that they want as part of the subject to approval, uh, you know, we would agree to that. Um, it's just that, you know, it's, it's, it's just adding, um, you know, a little bit more work.
But you'd have no objection to adding a wood stockade fence in place of the existing vinyl that you have, am I correct?
No, I do not.
Okay. With regard to FB rooftop equipment, the screening, we've already covered the.
Sure, it's Donna again. Can you back up to the windows? Can, can Mr. Vandermark just, um, point out which are the awning windows?
Sure.
A sketch?
Yes. So we have a ribbon of awning window here, a ribbon of awning window here and a ribbon of awning window here. An awning window is similar recasement, however, the hinge happens to be in a different location. As per the redevelopment plan, you want a square aesthetic with divided light. These could have very well been, um, just a very small casement window with the same exact appearance. I, I, I don't see any harm with awning windows. It, it happens to be an expression of some of the architecture that I put together. Is that I, I enjoy having an awning window high, you know, above the bed line in, in most bedrooms. So I, I don't see as that as being a detriment to the architecture and/or architectural details of the redevelopment plan.
And we do request an exception to the, uh, to the design elements that are required.
And it's, it's on both sides though, right? North end, south?
Yes.
Okay.
Go to page five, the siding style. Why don't you touch upon that a little bit?
Sure. Um, yeah, in the report, I had mentioned, uh, historically, uh, the siding would be of a very thin height and profile. Um, that would be four inches. Uh, what we have, uh, being installed on the house is, uh, is a five and a half vertical height, uh, of aesthetic, which is the absolute minimum, uh, vertical, uh, cement board plank siding you can get. Um, so, you know, we're, we're about an inch to an inch and a half off of, of lap for his, from a historical standpoint and detail. Um, you know, but again, uh, you know, from a material standpoint, I, I, I think there's no better choice for this house. Um, some of the other, uh, comments were, um, you know, what exactly is happening at the bays? Um, we are wrapping, um, each window picked with a picture frame of an AZAC wrap. Um, you know, it's not 100% accurate here that we will also be, uh, panelizing the AZAC, uh, you know, at the smaller bay extensions. Um, the larger bay here will have a AZAC wrap at the windows and at the door frames, however, the siding will run up in between.
With regard to the site design, there are a few comments with regard to the plantings on there. Um, indicates limited planting design is not atypical of the architectural period that the building renovation hopes to represent. Um, there was a suggestion of greater area plantings on the front yard consisting of evergreens and deciduous shrubs to complement the architectural style of the building. Any objection to that or you want to comment on that?
Uh, not at all. Um, we originally chose natural grasses, uh, you know, for the front, uh, front lawn and, and front landscaping. Uh, we just, uh, I thought it was appropriate. You see them all up and down Kingsley and I thought it was, you know, something that, uh, you know, it's kind of a signature of Asbury Park. But we, we have no problem, uh, putting in, uh, evergreen, uh, plantings in front of the house, uh, you know, to return it back to, uh, you know, what would have been there historically. Not a problem.
And comment four, point two was just to add certain notes or details pertaining to the plantings, proposed plantings, no objection to that, correct?
No objection.
And lastly, with stormwater, there's a comment that, uh, applicants should consider permile pavement, consider installing gutters to collect the roof runoff that may be directed to the front yard planter and lawn area. Can you comment on that, please?
Uh, yes. Okay. I think on the long runs of the eastern, western, uh, excuse me, the, the east to west facade here, these long eaves we have, the edge of this, uh, roof rake, um, this rafter is very, very thin. Um, it almost is reduced down to approximately two inches. If you added a gutter, uh, to this roof line here, all you're really going to see is now this, this kind of bulkiness, uh, of the profile of the gutter. Um, and I don't think it would be appropriate, um, historically, uh, to have a gutter line on both of these long runs of, of, uh, roof line. Um, you know, at the lower roofs and also at the garage roof, uh, yes, we will be providing gutters. However, I, I, I don't think it would be appropriate, um, by adding the mass of a gutter to, uh, these two long runs of roof.
What about permile pavement?
Sorry, before you go on, Donna, is that, what's common in that, this neighborhood for gutters on roofs like this?
Well, I, I mean, there is no common, uh, you know, historically, not, you know, roof gutters were not common. They were expensive, you know, so you had to be a pretty wealthy design to, to include round gutters. Uh, and then with the, the undercroft, the way it's designed, yeah, it makes it really complicated to do. Um, I don't know if, I, I really don't know what the architectural solution is. There may be, you know, if we can catch whatever we can catch kind of approach, uh, or if there's a way on the, um, on the north side, uh, since, um, you know, that's going to be just lawn area on the side of the house. You know, since that's where the rainfall is going to basically sheet off the roof, uh, if it's a stone trench or something like that, to allow, you know, at least to collect and not just sheet onto the neighbor. You know, and then do like an underdrain to the front.
That, that is something that we would agree to, sure.
One of my questions was, is it going to be runoff into your neighbor's yard?
I think there already is, Dan.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of a pre-existing condition, you know, it, this is kind of a lesser of all evils here. Uh, whether, you know, we, we, we put a gutter on a historical roof line to collect the water or we allow the water to do what it's been doing for, uh, you know, 100, 150 years now.
This is Donna. I, I would, I would suggest though that if there were not a standing seam metal roof, and trust me, I'm a big fan of a metal roof, just not a fan of the black. Just, you know, like galvanized would be awesome or some, you know, colored, uh, from that, from that, uh, excerpt in the plan. But, uh, if there were an asphalt shingle roof, they could use deflectors so that, uh, you know, goes more toward the back or to the front. I mean, it's not a great solution either because there's just not enough room around the house. But, um, it could reduce some of the impact on that, uh, north neighbor.
Okay, thank you.
The, the best solution may be, uh, to let it sheet flow off straight down into a stone trench with an underdrain that directs it, you know, toward, toward the front yard into that planter area.
We're good with that, right, Anthony?
Absolutely.
I would, um, have to agree with Donna on that.
I also agree.
I agree with Donna as well, but I disagree. I love the, I love the black roof, so. But I have one, so.
Yeah, I love the black roof too and I have a black.
And I think it's a really nice nod to historical times with a really nice, modern, uh, modern look and feel aesthetic. I, I like it a lot.
You should well in the rain.
I have, I have gutters on my metal roof with rain chains, just saying.
I think that covers the report. Now, I would have one other witness, Ed Coling. Um, it's up to the board what they want to do, obviously. Um, I have made the application twofold. Number one, that based upon, um, case law, it is not an expansion of a non-conforming use in term, we do not need a D2 variance. I do have our planner available to testify in the event we do need a D2 variance. So does the board prefer to hear from the planner first before making that determination? Do they first want to make the determination with regard to whether or not a D2 variance is required?
Uh, what would be a more appropriate way of, of viewing this, Jack? I think that's a better question for you.
Um.
Well. I. You, you can, you deal with the issue of whether or not a variance is required. However, due to the comments that have been made by the board members, I don't know that you're going to need a lot of planning testimony.
You know, let me, let me do this. Let me get through it pretty quickly then. Okay?
Hang on, Andy, just a second because I know we've kind of been, I'm sorry, this is Donna. Mr. Vandermark testified as the architect and the owner.
Correct.
Have not, and we've all had a free kind of, kind of flowing conversation or reviewed the comments of my report. We have not yet had a cross of him as an architect.
True.
Public. So I think before you move on to any kind of summation or, or characterization of the interpretation, maybe we should.
Okay, absolutely, Donna, but.
Yeah, let's get the, let's find out.
I think, I think first we have to make sure that the board's questions are all answered before we move on to the general public.
Right.
So, um, has everyone gotten a chance to ask Mr. Vandermark any more questions regarding his design and architectural concept?
I, I have.
Take each one independently.
I have a question. This is Russell Lewis. Mr. Vandermark, you, you had testified that there was some portion of the structure that was going to be covered and built in to shield from, um, car lights and so forth. That I, I, and I'm, I'm just wanting to return to that because it was the only thing that I'm not clear about.
So at the, at the first floor, and if I go back to, okay, we, we had a pre-existing.
And this is, what elevation is this?
This is the western elevation rear facade.
Okay.
We, we had a three and a half foot wide deck, um, that runs approximately half of the house and then wrapped forward, um, and terminated at that kitchen, uh, for the illegal third unit.
Okay.
So what we're proposing is I'm going to eliminate this wraparound, uh, of this deck area um, by, and reduce an additional 39 square feet of lot coverage and just maintain the portion that's directly behind the house. Also, um, what I'm requesting from the board is that in this amendment, I would like to make this section solid, um, with a solid foundation. You know, again, uh, for protection from headlights and also to make it a little bit more, uh, private and secure. Um, because as you can see here in this, uh, in this photograph, this balcony, uh, this cantilever balcony is literally 10 feet away from this, this deck. Um, so, you know, I, I was looking to, you know, have a little bit of protection in carrying this roof line down and picture framing, you know, this, this outdoor space.
All right.
It's really, it's really not ideal. Um, it, it wouldn't be something that if you had to create, you wouldn't create this condition from, from, uh, from construction.
And that is just a first floor. It will, it will continue a little bit of a roof line. It's not going all the way up, obviously.
Yes, of course. That, that, that is only a continuation of the roof line here at the first floor.
Do you have a rendering of that, of that elevation, that side?
No, I do not.
Okay.
My apologies for that.
All right.
Oh, sorry, Russell, are you done?
I think I am, thank you.
Um, to piggyback off that, are there any lights that are going to be on the exterior of the house? In the rear, so facing west?
Not, not on the rear of the house, no. We're not proposing any lights there.
Can you go back to your rendering of that side of the house?
The southern or the northern side?
I guess it'd be the western.
The western side, uh, the two-dimensional elevation then, here?
And where's that, the thing you were just talking about?
This will be the, the new, um, opaque railing with a privacy fence now. Because once you, once you remove that kitchen area, you're now inviting people to walk down this driveway and just jump right onto this deck. Um, it's, it's not very secure. Um, so again, this provides a little bit more protection. Um, you know, if this is an opaque railing with a six-foot-high privacy fence here.
Rather than?
Rather than an open balustrade. Rather than an open balustrade that runs from here all the way through and back around the house. It's it's definitely not appropriate and really not private and not secure.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the other board members? All right, seeing no other questions from the other board members. I'm assuming, Donna, all your questions are answered at this point? Donna?
Sorry, unmuted. Yes, I am good, thank you.
Okay, so then I will open it up to the general public. Irene, do we have anybody in the public with their hand raised?
Yes, we do, thank you, Chris. We have one person, Mr. Tim Lynch. Please go ahead and ask your question only for this witness only.
How you doing? Timothy Lynch, I live right next door. We're at 1209 Berg with a little yellow house.
Could you speak up, Mr. Lynch? I could barely hear you.
Sure, my name's Timothy Lynch. I live at 1209 Berg, right next door, the little yellow house right next door. How you doing, Anthony?
I'm very, nice to meet you finally, thank you.
Okay, anyway, I love what you're doing with the house. It's absolutely beautiful. I've been there for 11 years. I've dealt with this house being a, I saw with probably up to 20 people living in this house at one point in time. And I've also dealt with the water running off that roof. So I'm going to ask you to put gutters on. For the main reason what's been happening over all these years is the water kind of ski slopes off that roof and gains quite a bit of speed and actually plumb, plumbles my house with water. So when we get the heavy downpours, it's unbelievable the amount of damage. It goes right down into my basement. It actually has rotted out my Bilko door, which one of your build, one of your workers actually fell through the other day, which I had to go down there and fix it, which is fine. I understand, and we're going to work together. But um, but yet I know it's going to be a little bit of a architectural drawback, but there really absolutely has to be gutters on that side to get the water from not hammering my house anymore. So I'm going to ask you to do that for me. Everything else I love about the house, I think.
Mr. Lynch, I'm so sorry to interrupt you, but if you can please hold your comments until the very end of the testimonies. Right now, we are only taking questions specifically to Mr. Vandermark's testimony. Do you have any questions for him?
Well, I mean, the question is, can we get gutters on the side of that house? That's on my side and get that water channeled away through piping to get it away from that whole side of the house.
You asked it, Mr. Lynch. Let let Mr. Vandermark respond.
Sure.
Mr. Lynch, it is a pleasure to meet you, and I certainly want to be a good neighbor. And what I'll do is I'll I'll try to find a low profile gutter, you know, to put on that roof line, and I will divert the water away from your house.
Okay, all right, well, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch.
Okay.
Do we, do we have anybody else, Irene, in the public with their hand raised?
I do not show anyone else. Thank you, Mr. Avaloni.
All right, so, Mr. Vandermark, thank you much, thank you very much for your testimony. Mr. Karas, you can proceed.
A determination by the board whether or not they want me to go ahead, present my planning testimony, or first make a determination as to whether or not we need a D two variance. I'm good either way, so.
Typically, any expansion of basic laws, if you expand a nonconforming use or nonconforming structure, it typically requires a a D two. When in doubt, whether you think of this, the expansion is substantial enough to meet that threshold, that's that Lorenz case. We went through that case over on, for Mr. Siegel's property a few months back. We determined 20 versus 21 units. We used the same criteria in the interpretation. You looked at the qualitative expansion. This, that case is a little different from this because this definitely has some numbers attached to it. And, you know, it's your call. And in the alternative, if you do determine it's a, it's a D two, obviously, by the comments that have been made, I'm going to go out on a limb here. Obviously, by the comments that have been made by all the board members and the next door neighbor. Everyone likes the project, and the applicant has agreed to address the issue of the water runoff for the next door neighbor.
That's irrespective whether or not it's a D two. The comments and certainly the stipulations that we've agreed to, certainly we're agreeing to. In terms of whether or not some expansion were reducing the footprint, the only potential expansion is physically that dormer. But the net is a decrease in the overall size of the building, so I would.
So, so I I agree with you, Mr. Karas. I I think, you know, we should at least poll the board, see how they feel about whether this is an expansion of a non, or exacerbating a nonconforming use by expansion of the dormer. So I I think the best way to proceed is we get some comments back from the board and see where we go from there.
Sure, poll the board.
Very good.
So let's, I'll start with Russell.
I do not think it meets the threshold. I don't think it it exacerbates the that rule.
Okay, Brittany.
I'm kind of torn, but I think I'm happy that a little bit of the building coverage is going down and that the FAR is slightly going down. So in that case, I don't think it's making it worse, but I do you think there's still some architectural things that Donna brought up? I don't know. No.
That's a separate issue, Brittany. Right now, we're just, that's a totally different issue. Right now, we're talking about whether it's exacerbating the nonconforming use of the property, so strictly from that. Okay. Jill?
I do not feel that it's continuing it, expanding it.
Okay. Tim? You have to unmute yourself, Tim.
Audio, there we go. I I'm good with it. I don't think it exacerbates it at all.
Mr. Harris?
I'm okay to get exacerbated. You know, the FAR is going down, so I'm fine with it.
Christopher?
I'm okay with it.
And Catherine?
I'm okay with it. I don't think it exacerbates it.
Bonnie?
There's no real expansion of GLA or living space, so I I think it's fine.
And personally, I I do not feel it's a, exacerbates the nonconforming use to any great degree either, so we can move on, Mr. Karas.
Well, why don't we do that in the form of a motion? A second, we'll formalize what you just did, just formalize it.
Okay, so I I make a formal motion that this does not exacerbate the nonconforming use of this property.
This is Russell Lewis, I'll second.
Thank you, I have a motion by Christopher Avaloni and a second by Russell Lewis. Daniel Harris. Brittany Ashman.
Yes.
Christopher Gonzalez.
Yes.
Joe Potter.
Yes.
Tim Slick.
Yes.
Catherine Minervini.
Yes.
I'm not going to call on Bonnie Knack to vote, she is an alternate. And Russell Lewis.
Yes.
And Christopher Avaloni.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, Mr. Karas, you have your answer.
An expansion of a nonconforming use, and we've agreed to certain design revisions, which you can conclude within that resolution, and we're fine.
I, why don't I reiterate what I have, and then you can help me? Number one, applicant, the witness and applicant has testified that the HVAC units will be screened. Number two, the door in the bathroom, in the garage, the existing bathroom, that's going to be downsized to be converted to a pocket door. And the man door will be revised to swing out versus in. The fence on the south side is going to be changed from plastic vinyl to what?
A wooden picket fence?
Okay, let me write that down.
Maybe not picket, like make a, like a shadow box, board on board fence. Picket, it has a definition of spikes.
Right, it's not going to be an open fence, it'll be a solid fence.
Yes.
Okay, uh, just a reference to Donna's report, which I'll talk to her about, the planters, the density as per Donna's recommendation on page five, four point one and four point two. Applicant has agreed to comply with those recommendations.
Hold on one sec. I i is that what the board is looking for, those design revisions with regards to plantings?
Yes.
Everyone?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, uh, stormwater. This is where I'm a little confused, stormwater versus gutters, maybe it's two distinct issues, stormwater or Donna's recommendation?
Was that? Sorry, Jack, it's Donna, so.
I could use the help.
Yeah, so the neighbor is asking for on the north side that a gutter be employed.
Yes.
Obviously, that's going to have a downspout. That should be directed toward the planter area.
Got it. Okay, so we'll, we'll, we'll develop that, but I have that as the next one. Gutter to move water away from Mr. Lynch's house as per what Donna described, how it would work.
Anthony, you good with that?
I am, yeah, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, because she she mouthed it out, but I couldn't write that fast. It sounded good, I'll tell you that, it sounded, sounded like it would fix the problem. And that's what I have.
We're good.
Okay, so I assume everyone will vote in the affirmative to make those conditions of the positive vote that this is not an expansion of a nonconforming use. Do I have?
I'd like to add one.
Okay.
I think there was a part two to that stormwater, right? Wasn't that previous pavement instead of?
Yeah, that's what I was asking Donna about.
Did we discuss that? I think I actually cut you off, Andrew, when you started talking about that.
We discussed the previous.
I think we got sidetracked by the, me describing a stone trench, and I don't know that we actually resolved if the driveway will be a permeable pavement or if it's just going to be regular concrete.
Yeah, 4.3.
Anthony, do you want to address that, the pavement on the driveway? Recommendation is to make it permeable.
If if the board sees fit, if that's something that is, that, you know, will sway the approval, then it's something that I will agree to. You know, I am not locked into a concrete driveway. It's fine.
I would feel strongly for it, since you are at 66% building coverage and what's required is 25.
That's fine. Yep.
Is that the unanimous consensus of the board for that additional condition?
I'm good with that.
Anyone again, anyone opposed? Nope, okay. So that will be another condition of the approval.
We're good.
Application approved.
Thank you. All right. Everybody have a good night, and I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Jack?
Yes.
We didn't have public comment, did we?
No, no.
Sorry about that, but I think Mr., we'll get Mr. Lynch back in.
He didn't want to say more, yeah.
Well, actually, since a D two variance is not required.
I don't know that there's public comment on an interpretation.
Yeah, there really wasn't, but we already know it's common. Yeah, we know it, we're okay. Unless he wants to add something, but.
Well, unless there's somebody else in the audience. Is there anybody else that we didn't hear from, Irene?
There is no one else. Would you like me to unmute Mr. Lynch just to see if he had any other comments?
Andy, you don't, I assume you don't mind.
That's fine.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Lynch, go ahead.
Let me, let me speak to him, Mr. Lynch.
Yes, yes, sir.
Yeah, Jack Serpico, Board Attorney. I I believe we addressed your concerns.
Yes, it sounds like you did.
Okay, and I did understand you to say during the question and answer period that you were overwhelmingly in favor of the project. Subject to the drainage situation, the water runoff being fixed.
Absolutely, yeah, it looks like he's doing a great job.
Just a quick question, Jack, does he need to be sworn in with that?
We're fine, we're okay. I'm just, I'm just recharacterizing his testimony that he made during the hearing.
Okay.
We're fine, we're fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
If everybody's happy, I'm happy.
Okay, I'm, I'm very happy. I look forward to this project happening.
It's it's quite, it's quite beautiful, Mr. Vandermark.
Thank you, thank you so much. I I really appreciate it.
Thanks.
Yes.
So I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second.
Hey, I have a motion by Christopher Avaloni and a second by Brittany Ashman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody. Good luck, Mr. Vandermark with your house.
Thank you.
Good night.
Night.
Thank you.